Members, it's time. This session is on Constitution and Mainland Affairs. This session will take us to 7:37. Now to allow for orderly, a good order and fair order for members to speak. The staff will first clear all the raised hand indications. Now, if members wish to speak, please use the raised hand feature of Zoom to so indicate. I would like to welcome the Secretary for Constitution and Mainland Affairs and his team to the session. First, I invite the Secretary to make a brief introduction and then the floor will open the questions. Check a trip, please. Thank you. Members, I would like to highlight the relevant parts in relation to Constitution and Mainland Affairs Bureau in the draft estimates of expenditure 2022 to 2023. In this financial year, the Constitution and Mainland Affairs Bureau receives a provision of $872 million. Our key tasks include the following. First, improving the electoral system. On the 31th of March last year, the National People's Congress endorsed the decision of the National People's Congress improving the electoral system of Hong Kong Special Administrative Region. In the same month, the NPC Standing Committee passed the amended Annexes I and II to the Basic Law. And also in May last year, the administration passed the gazette the Improving Electoral System Consultated Amendments Ordinance 2021 and completed a local legislative exercise to improve the electoral systems. After the improvement of the electoral system, two elections were held. The 2021 Election Committee Subcommittee Ordinary Elections and the 2021 Legislative Council General Election. These elections were held successfully on the 19th of September and the 19th of December respectively last year. For the electoral elections, we put in place various improvement measures to make sure that the elections was fair. We also included people-oriented elements. This includes increasing the number of polling stations and substantially increasing the number of ballot distribution counters. At the Hangyuanwai, Lawwu and Lawmachao cross boundary crossing points, we set up polling stations. We offered provided practice and rehearsal sessions for staff. We substantially implemented and enhanced the electronic poll register system and also arranged special queues. Also, at the central counting stations, we substantially increased the number of accounting desks. Also, we handled separately the processes of opening the ballot box for ballot counting and also the checking of election documents. So, the counting for the electoral election completed in the shortest times in recent years. And for the two elections, they were held successfully. They carried significant significance to the people of Hong Kong and the entire population because they showed their sport representation, fair competition, political tolerance and balanced participation. That is a new chapter of good governance. Our next task, important task is the GE election. Because of the severe epidemic, on the 18th of February, the Chief Executive announced that government has invoked the emergency regulations ordinance to reschedule the election of the sixth chief executive from the 27th of March to the 8th of May. And the new nomination period has been changed to the 13th to the 16th of April. I'm grateful to members for the views on the arrangement for the two elections so we could continue to take stock of the experience together with the Electoral Affairs Commission and the Registration and Electoral Office. We will bring about make improvements and make sure that this election will be held in a fair, open and honest manner and to fully implement the principle of patriots ministering Hong Kong. We will also closely watch the development of the pandemic. We will keep in close liaison with the Department of Health and make sure there are suitable protection measures. While we make sure that the collection could be conducted, we will also make sure there will be no increased risk of spreading the disease. Second, taking oath of overtaking of public offices. Now, upholding the basic law and pledging allegiance to the People's Republic of China and the Hong Kong Special Administrative Region are the basic requirements of those who have ministers in Hong Kong and also for public offices. In May last year, the SL government gazetted two legislation that's been passed. Pieces of legislation have been passed by the Legislative Council to further improve the oath-taking arrangement as required under the Basic Law. So, this is that we also laid out the requirements for election committee members and district councillors to take oaths. For now, the chief executive, principal officials, executive councillors, the legislative councillors, judges and judicial officers of all levels, election committee members, district councillors and civil servants have all taken the oath or made the declaration. As for other public officers, such those in statutory agencies, the government is now studying the issue and we will announce the details later. Third, the national flag, national anthem, national emblem, regional flag, regional emblem. Now, the national flag, national emblem and national anthem are the symbols of the country. They represent the authority and the dignity of the country. In the past two years, with the strong support of the Legislative Council, we have passed the National Ensign Ordinance as well as the National Flag and National Anthem Amendment Ordinance that will better protect our national flags, emblems and handsome. But the regional flag and regional emblem also are the symbols of the Hong Kong SL government. So, we are now working on the amendments to the Regional Flag and Regional Emblem Ordinance to bring them in line with the national anthem ordinance. We plan to submit the Reverend Amendment Bill within this legislative session to the council. Fourthly, on promoting the constitutional law and constitution and basic law, constitutional basic law to get a form, a solid constitutional foundation for the building of the Hong Kong SL. It is the best protection for our long-term prosperity and stability. To fully implement the one country, two systems accurately, we have to strictly abide by the constitutional basic law. We have set aside $26 million in 2022 to 2023 for various promotion activities such as using online platforms for various promotional activities and also such as constitution, basic law, parent-child workshops, preparation or production of different publicity materials or funding on NGOs and community organizations to carry out various promotional activities and so on. Five, on individual rights. The estimates of the expansion of this bureau is mostly for the expenditure of the Equal Opportunities Commission and the Office of the Privacy Commissioner for Personal Data, PCPD. The EOC is responsible for the implementation of four anti-discrimination ordinances. In 2022, 2023, the provision for the EOC is $128.6 billion. In the past two years, the administration passed the relevant legislation to further enhance the protection under the four anti-discrimination ordinances in relation to discrimination and harassment. We have also, we will also continue to work with the EOC to how we could further enhance the protection under these ordinances. And then the SL government will continue to do publicity and public education to promote equal opportunities for people with different sexual orientations and for the transgender. And we want to promote inclusion, mutual respect and non-discriminatory culture and values. We will continue to fund the Tuung Hua Group of Hospitals 24-hour telephone line, pride line for sexual minorities. We will also be preparing training materials for social workers to enhance their sensitivity in this area. The PCPD has a provision of $93.4 million in 2023, 2 to 23. They will continue to tackle doxing behavior, which is now a criminal offense. And they've actually made the first arrest was actually made in December last year. We will continue to work with the PDCPD to study the various amendments, proposed amendments to the personal data privacy ordinance and consult the let's go in a timely manner. On Mainland Affairs, last March, the country endorsed the 14 five-year plan that provides clear positioning for the future development of Hong Kong. This will ensure the long-term prosperity and stability of Hong Kong. At the same time, it will help Hong Kong to consolidate advantages and be better integrated into national development. The 14 five-year plan will continue to support Hong Kong in its effort to enhance its status as an international financial center, shipping center and trading center. At the same time, it will support Hong Kong developing into a international legal and dispute resolution service hub for the Asia-Pacific region. And then although will be four new areas where Hong Kong would upgrade its status as an international aviation hub, international innovation and technology center, regional IP trading center and East meets West Center for International Cultural Exchange. The Hong Kong will make the most of this high degree of rule of law and marketization and internationalization to take part in the domestic circulation, development of the country and also in due circulation. We will become a participant in domestic circulation and a facilitator of international circulation. We have also broadcast a series of 10 episodes on Hong Kong's role and opportunities under the 14 five-year plan. Development of the Greater Bay Area, the Guangdong-Hong Kong-Macau Bay Area, GBA, development is an important development strategy in a new era. It will further enrich the one country, two systems. The SL government attaches great importance to the development of the GBA. Various policies have been rolled out to support Hong Kong residents and professionals to go to the GBA cities for work or to live there and to start a business. So, the Hong Kong business could also seize upon the development opportunities of the GBA as well. Now, under the one country, two system, the SL government will, under the principles of the outline development plan of GBA, seek opportunities for innovation and breakthrough under the different fields. And then we will go by the complementary and women principle to actively take part in the quality building of GBA. Last September, the central authorities announced the Shanghai-Shenzhen-Hong Kong Modern the central authorities announced a plan for comprehensive deepening reform and opening up of the Shanghai-Shenzhen-Hong Kong Modern Service Industry Corporation, so Shanghai Plan to increase the area of the Shanghai-Shenzhen-Hong Kong Modern Service in the industry corporation significantly from 14.92 square kilometers to 120.56 kilometers. It also stretches the promotion of high level, opening up in ten high to fostering of innovative development of modern service industries and acceleration of the building of a system of modern services that is compatible with Hong Kong international standards. Cooperation with other mainland provinces and municipalities. The chief executive announced in the October's policy address last year that the new level Wubei-Hong Kong Cooperation Mechanism would be set up in November last year. At the high-level meeting come first plenary session of the Hong Kong Wubei Cooperation Conference, the new cooperation mechanism was set up. We will have also set up cooperation mechanism with the Pen Delta, Pearl River Delta area, Guangdong, Beijing, Shanghai, Fujian, Sichuan, Wubei, Shenzhen and Macau. We will continue to work with other municipalities and provinces. On the mainland officers in 2020 to 23, the five mainland officers and is the 11 liaison units under these officers as well as the Taiwan officers will have a budget of $392.7 million. Now, the mainland officers are responsible for promoting trade and commerce, facilitating investments, supporting Hong Kong enterprises on the mainland. They also provide assistance to Hong Kong people on the mainland, foster exchange and cooperation between Hong Kong and the mainland provinces and municipalities and so on. The SL government will review the roles of the mainland officers, their effectiveness and the distribution. We'll see if there's need to rename this office to back to reflect their roles and functions. In the process, we will listen carefully to the views of Hong Kong people groups on the mainland and see how we could better support their work. And also, we will make it easier for Hong Kong people to go to the mainland for, to live and for development. And then we will also further promote Hong Kong take advantage of the 25th anniversary of our return to the motherland this year. That's all for my introduction. I'm happy to answer members' questions. Thank you. We will, you know, increase resources suitably to support Hong Kong people on the mainland so they could work together with us to better and we will better serve them. So, we will set aside suitable resources, increase resources. As for doxing, I will ask the commissioner to reply to the question. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members. Since last October, the amendment ordinance was passed and then we've been working non-stop to implement the new arrangements. And then in December last year, we made the first arrest on doxing. Of course, we have to go through set procedures in collecting evidence and this cyber world. So, we had to collect evidence. We also have to have evidence to show who committed the doxing act. And then after we've collected evidence, we have to seek legal advice. So, there is a certain process to follow. And then since last year, we have started permanent investigation into 43 cases on issuing notices as at the end of March, we have issued 466 cessation notices requiring them to remove 1,400 doxing messages. So, more than 80% of the messages have been removed. As for the remaining messages, we follow on them actively. So, we will continue to work with the ref departments to follow up on these cases.
Ms. Chen, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you for the very detailed reply. Well, I've got three questions and two follow-ups. First of all, GMAP and zero zero two. I want to know about the promotion of the constitution and basic law in relation to public servants, including teachers, other professionals, in addition to civil servants. I've seen you merely providing talks. I want to know about the understanding of such personnel in relation to the understanding of the constitution of basic law. Do you say imposing minimum number of hours of knowing the basic law and the constitution? Would there be an assessment? And then, CMAB zero zero three, this relation to youth development in the GMAB. How can you make sure that youth development will be closely connected with the development of the GBA? Do you know how many secondary school students will have further studies in the GBA? How many of them will stay behind to develop their career upon graduation? Do you have the statistics and have the bureau set out any targets or set down any indicators? I know that prior to the meeting, I have put in a written supplementary question. Please also give a reply to my supplementary question, Secretary, please. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Chen, for her questions. First of all, relation to the promotion of the constitution and the basic law. As we have set out in our reply, we take it very seriously. In fact, we adopted a multi-point approach. For the SAR government, we have set up a basic law promotion steering committee under the leadership of the CS4A with five working groups covering teachers and students, local communities, civil servants, industrial, commercial and professional sectors as well as the community outside Hong Kong. All the five working groups will focus on their welfare portfolios and they will carry out our promotion of the basic law, the constitution as well as the national security law. Well, for civil servants, well, we have been focusing our promotional work on different fronts like the new recruits serving civil servants or civil servants who are about to be promoted. All of them have to be trained in such areas. And of course, as a result of the pandemic, our study tours and visits to the mainland have to be put on hold. Otherwise, normally, we make arrangements to make sure that civil servants will get training on the mainland. They do take part in such training sessions. We are going to get the new civil service college. I'm sure our promotional efforts in such an area will be enhanced. Then for the educational sector, for the teachers, school principals and also members of the school management committees, again, we step out our efforts in relation to the training given to them in relation to the basic law and the constitution. And we enhance their knowledge of such matters. For the GBA, I would like to defer to our commissioner. Yes, Mr. Dren. Thank you, Chair. Of course, we are very concerned about the opportunities provided by the GBA to our young people as well as our support to our young people as to the figures requested. May I defer to Mr. Mark in relation to the figures that the member would like to get? Yes, please be brief. Well, in our main reply, we have already talked about a entrance arrangement, university entrance arrangement. It's been introduced for a long time. Hong Kong students, more and more Hong Kong students getting their further studies on the mainland. For the year 2021, we've got 5,300 Hong Kong students pursuing further studies on the mainland. In fact, in March 2020, there were over 3,000 applications that have been approved. 2,000 are full-rated in relation to the subsidy scheme. So, in fact, many young people would like to benefit from the subsidy scheme, so from the funding scheme so that they can be financially assisted in their studies on the mainland. Miss Carmen Ken, well, in relation to the government's replies to our questions concerning the GBA, you can see that in terms of the structure as well as the establishment of the government's concern for three years, even if we set aside the effecture of the epidemic, I don't think the government has been effective in the GBA portfolio. Yes, we have got the development office and we have the commissioner. The government thinks that in this way, there can be coordination of the work. But I don't think it has been effective. Well, from the fact that the government cannot answer specific questions asked by us, then you can tell that the structure as well as the officers in place are not effective. I think we need to have matrix reporting so that we can make use of the development opportunities of the GBA. I would like to follow up on GMAB 016 in relation to our mainland offices. I don't think you have made any changes to the manpower level. And in fact, we have got more and more Hong Kong people going to work and live on the mainland. Well, in fact, we need more manpower for our mainland offices. And in fact, you should also set aside more resources for Hong Kong earths living on the mainland for their application so that they can respond to the diversity of needs of the Hong Kong earths on the mainland. And then for our Guangdong ETO, I want to know how they can cooperate with the GBA office. And then what about the following point? There is, I know that the TDC is under the Commerce and Economic Development Bureau. Can you not rationalize the resources given to the Hong Kong TDC as well as your mainland offices? Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Ken, for her question. Let me first of all talk about the GBA Development Office. I think one very important function is as follows. Well, for the GBA, we have to deal with different policy portfolios and the development office plays the coordinating role. For the actual policies, they will be set up and implemented by the welfare policy bureaus. You know that the GBA covers different disciplines, financial services, medical and healthcare, et cetera, et cetera. Such is impossible for a single bureau to carry out all the work. And therefore, for our office, on the one hand, we provide support to the student committee under the leadership of the chief executive. On the right hand, we would like to liaise with the counterparts in Guangdong. On the right hand, we would like to liaise with the counterparts in Guangdong province. And then there are stakeholders, professional groups, business chambers, et cetera. We need to liaise with them so as to reflect their aspirations. And of course, we need to carry out publicity work as well. So that's the main function of the Development Office rather than asking the Development Office to formulate specific policies. But of course, Ms Ken's concern is loud and clear. And we will be reviewing the situation from time to time. If we lack manpower, thus weakening our coordinating work, then we will try to secure more resources to carry out our work. So Ms Ken doesn't have to be worried about that. For our mainland officers, the Chief Executive in her last policy address last October said that we need to reexamine the functions of the mainland offices and evaluate the services. This is exactly what we're doing. We try to see if we need to have more outlets in the light of the fourteenth five-year plan, in the light of the G B A development, in the light of the fact that we are getting better integration with the rest of the country. We are carrying out a review of the mainland offices. Once we're ready with our recommendations after an internal discussion, we'll come back to the electoral. If we need to get more resources, we'll be briefing the electoral and ask for your approval. As to the question of the T D C, there is the Trade Development Council. Sorry, for the Guangdong E T O as well as our G B A Development Office, there is a division of labor, but they also play complementary roles. For the G B A Development Office, it plays a coordinating role if necessary. If we need promotional work or implementation in the G B A cities, then we will ask our Guangdong office to take that up. But of course, all the mainland offices will have the functions we examined. If necessary, we'll try to see if there is a need to rationalize or expand the functions and resources of the mainland offices. Just a question of the T D C. As I have said earlier on, they have launched the Go G B A electronic platform. They provide information to allow Hong Kong earths and Hong Kong enterprises to take advantage of the domestic circulation. Well, as to our partnership with the T D C, it has been running very smoothly. And if necessary, we'll try to see if we can sort of rationalize the cooperation as well as the resources. As Ms Ken has said, we must guard against duplication. We'll try our best to sort it out. Thank you.
If I may remind officials, it's four minutes each for members, including questions and answers. So please make sure you wash your time as you give a reply.
Dr. Tichy Yun, thank you. Chairman, I'd like to follow up on the expenditure of the Registration Electoral Office, R E O. Now, the secretary in reply to questions said much about doing a proper job with the elections and publicity. Now, in the E R E O, have you set aside any funds for by elections for the district councils? If you don't have such plans, do you have any resources to enhance district administration? Because one of the important roles of district councils is to listen to public view. So would you do something about that? Second question is on the expenditure of the Equal Opportunities Commission. In the next year, there's funding will be cut by two point six percent. One of the percent, one percent of that is across the board, expense reduction for all departments. So there is a reduction of one percent of recurrent expenditure. So it's here to say, how how much impact would it have on the work of the U C? And how are you going to make up for any problems? Secretary, about district council and the budget for district councils. First, Mr. Wong could tell you something about the district council budget. The Chief Executive mentioned before the scale of a district council by-election is huge. So there won't be any by-election in this financial year. Sorry, we didn't hear the, I didn't hear the reply. Well, well, let me say a few words then. Dr. Tick, the Chief Executive has stressed repeatedly that for the district council election, we still have to review the functions of the district councils and whether we're still, you know, consider elections. So as for this term of government, there is no time to complete this review. So it will have to be left to the next government to consider the development, the future of the district councils. So in this financial year, therefore, there is no plan for this term of the government to make any arrangement in relation to the future development of district councils. The Equal Opportunities Commission, the chairman could say something about reducing the expenditure, the budget of the U C by one percent. It won't affect our work at all because we have adjusted the priorities of the different tasks and projects. So in terms of manpower and resources allocation, we would still have sufficient resources manpower for us to carry out our work effectively. In fact, from our work report, you can see that we have originally planned various education and publicity efforts, you know, at the community level and so on. And none of these tasks have been affected. A quick follow up, please. It said that you leave it to the next term of the government to consider the district council elections. But have you, you know, set aside a budget for a possible by-election? Perhaps I didn't make myself clear. For by-election, this term of government would not have the time and to make arrangements for by-election. So we'll leave it to the next term of government. Thank you, Dr. Tick. In a budget, we have set aside four hundred and point, four hundred and one point three million dollars for that. Next, Mr. Rock Chen, thank you. I'd like to follow up on C M A B oh oh nine. Now, apart from publicizing and promoting the national security or improving the electoral system, you know, helping the country on foreign affairs is also important. Uh, you know, um, rather, working on mainland relations with us is always important. For example, on the mainland, some are saying we're not doing a good job with the anti epidemic effort and so on. But are these assertions fact based? Now, so are we doing a good job telling the Hong Kong story on the mainland? We clarifying fake information and we're disseminating facts at real time. Otherwise, if so, through what channels and platforms do we try to address any misunderstanding, misperception on the part of mainland competitors? Now, for our mainland offices, they will watch how information is being disseminated on the mainland about Hong Kong. And if we need to disseminate information to mainland competitors, we used to go through our mainland offices. And in Hong Kong, if there's need to make clarifications or they're important messages, we will issue press release in Hong Kong. And then officials may make speeches to disseminate information. But for the mainland, we have five mainland offices and eleven liaison units. So that would be an effective channel for us to pass on information. Secretary, have you made use of social media platforms that are popular among mainland people? Well, yes, we have official WeChat accounts. We also, we also interviewed by mainland TV and rate mainland media. And during these interviews, we would disseminate correct information to mainland compatriots. While there are some technical hitches, we are not able to see the faces of officials. We can only hear them. So the matter is being dealt with hopefully it will be sorted out soon. Mr. Sunny Ten, thank you. I'd like to follow up on C M A B oh two three is my own question. In the first paragraph, it mentions the steering committee, the promotions, basic loss promotion steering committee. It's is to provide advice here on the overall strategy and also monitors, valises and reviews professional promotional programs, undertaking by government departments and NGOs and so on. So would there be K P I's, a key performance indicators in assessing the effectiveness and the outcome of promotional efforts in relation to the constitution, basic law and national security law? And paragraph six of the reply, it says that you will build cooperation mechanisms of provinces and municipalities to provide more development opportunities for Hong Kong people on the mainland. I understand, Mr. Horace Young, and another member very much concerned about that. There have been online exchanges with Hong Kong businesses on the mainland. And they say it's important that there is a support by the Hong Kong S L government to help them to help the development in the Greater Bay Area. So would you review the whole arrangement and see how you could organize the different government departments and statutory bodies to support Hong Kong businesses? Now, statutory bodies may have formulated G B A development strategy and they may need to set up offices in the G B A themselves. So maybe you could work together with them to achieve synergy. For Shanghai, many Hong Kong businesses would like to start, you know, to do business there in Shanghai. So if you consider setting up more mainland offices, would you consider one in Shanghai? Because the textile government industry is very much interested in, you know, doing business in Shanghai. Thank you. For promotion of the constitution and basic law, there are various forms of promotional activities. We have online and offline activities. We have parent-child workshops. So we have different forms of promotion activities targeting different groups. And then under the Promotions Steering Committee of the Basic Law, we have five different working groups targeting different groups. So they could formulate effective measures to promote the the constitution, the basic law. And there are actually K P I's, for example, parent-child workshop. Now, we couldn't even hear the officials now. Perhaps we will take a break of five minutes to work out the technical issues. So five minutes, we'll come back after five minutes.